Commissioner Brooks, can you hear us?
Yes.
Derek, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Okay, so we are ready to go. Commissioner. It is 7:03 and I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to. I am going to start with a roll call. Mayor Franklin is here. Commissioner Brooks.
Present. I mean, sorry, here.
You're fine. Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Pravat.
Here.
Town Attorney Karen Ruff. Chief of Police David Burr.
Here.
Our Director of Public Works is on his way in. And during the roll call, I would also like to take a moment to take a quick vote. We are voting tonight, and because we don't have a town clerk, we can nominate someone else to serve that role for signing the legislation. I would like to just do a roll call vote to have Aiden Thomas attest to our legislation tonight. He is our special assistant. All in favor, say aye. Sorry, can I explain what we're doing? Sorry. It's just, he's here. He's going to hear us all call our vote. We know we signed the legislation. He's going to confirm that what we signed is what we voted. That's all he's doing. But we all have to agree that he can do that. And it has to be an employee. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
So that passes, and Director of Public Works Darren Lott. Right. We're going to move on to Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States.
To the public for which we stand. For liberty and justice for all.
Right, and we'll move on to review of the business agenda. We are going to vote on our town administrator tonight, and our candidate has been kind enough to join us this evening so we can swear them in prior to their official start date as they are already an employee of the town. Then we will move on to property standards, resident comment on charter update, and should we move to table? I'm going to ask that we table the police office space discussion as the contract has not yet been finalized. All in favor, tabling until September 10th meeting, which is a special meeting anyway. Say aye.
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 All right. We will go into the closed session summary from last time. On August 13th, 2024, there was a closed session held at 8:25 PM. It was closed under Annexated Code 3-305B1 and 7. The motion to go into closed session was made by Commissioner Pravat. And seconded by Commissioner Brooks. Those who voted included Commissioner Pravat, Commissioner Brooks, President Franklin, Commissioner Colbert. It was unanimous of elected officials in attendance. The meeting was, the closed session was attended by the four commissioners who voted and Attorney Ruff. Commissioner Lot joined us by phone partway through the meeting. There were no votes taken. The topics discussed were the offer for a town administrator and the police space contract. Attorney Ruff, did I miss anything?
No, when you finish that item, I will tell you.
Okay.
What we consulted.
Okay. So with that, I was going to move on to the consent agenda.
I was taking notes yesterday who made the motion, who seconded the motion. Neither one of us were clear.
Oh, we didn't do it like an official motion, did we? To table the police space. So I guess I would have called the motion, but there was no second. Yes, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'm actually going to take a minute to explain because the consent agenda includes a whole bunch of old minutes. The reason for this is that our town clerk was using video minutes. And the auditors, this is not adequate for the auditors, it would add several thousand dollars to our audit to continue to use video minutes. We did switch over, but these minutes never got taken down. And so it's time for the auditor to receive these minutes. They need to be sent over, so we are going backwards to approve them. However, former Commissioner Penoyer pointed out that there is an error in the Tuesday, September 26th minutes. So before I call for a motion, does anyone have questions about that? Why we're doing that? So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the minutes from September 26th, 2023? Commissioner Brooks, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot, how do you vote? Okay. Commissioner Pravat, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. And we will move on to business. We have Resolution 2020. Someone.
Doesn't text me.
Oh, okay, I thought it was somebody. Resolution 2024-0, 2424-10, which is on page 42 of your packet. And this is to. Actually, I'm going to ask Aiden Thomas, their specialist assistant, to read this into the record for us.
Resolution 2024-10, question, Reverend Town Leader, dated August 27th, 2024. The Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Marlboro to appoint Clayton Anderson, the Town Administrator of the Town of Marlboro, in accordance with the Town Charter.
Any discussion? We do need to take public comment because we are in a meeting. So if public has any comments about our town administrator choice, you may raise your hand online or come to the. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-10? I said it at the same time. Okay, so. Commissioner Brooks, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot?
Commissioner Pravat?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
The next item in our business is a swearing-in ceremony for Clayton Anderson. He will officially start as a town administrator on September 1st. He is currently working for us as a circuit rider, and so we have asked him to be sworn in today so that he will be able to hit the ground running on September 1st and not have to wait until September 10th. So we are going to get up and do that.
Yeah, we should all kind of put this on. Get up and come around. You guys want to get up and come. Okay. Commissioner Pravat, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. And we will move on to business. We have Resolution 2020. Someone.
Doesn't text me.
Oh, okay, I thought it was somebody. Resolution 2024-0, 2424-10, which is on page 42 of your packet. And this is to. Actually, I'm going to ask Aiden Thomas, their specialist assistant, to read this into the record for us. Page 42. Forty-two on the bottom corner.
Resolution 2024-10, question, Reverend Town Leader, dated August 27th, 2024. The Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Marlboro to appoint Clayton Anderson, the Town Administrator of the Town of Marlboro, in accordance with the Town Charter.
Any discussion? All, we do need to take public comment because we are in a meeting. So if public has any comments about our town administrator choice, you may raise your hand online or come to the. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-10? I said it at the same time. Okay, so. Commissioner Brooks, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lot? Commissioner Pravat?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
The next item in our business is a swearing-in ceremony for Clayton Anderson. He will officially start as a town administrator on September 1st. He is currently working for us as a circuit rider, and so we have asked him to be sworn in today so that he will be able to hit the ground running on September 1st and not have to wait until September 10th. So we are going to get up and do that.
Yeah, we should all kind of put this on. Get up and come around. And I'm. You guys want to get up and come. Okay. Yes, you want to have, I mean, hold it or need to hold it. Aye. Clayton Anderson. Do swear. We support the Constitution.
I support the Constitution.
Will there be faithful and mature citizens?
faithful and mature citizens.
And support the Constitution.
For constitutional law.
And I will.
And I will.
Testament.
Testament.
Diligent.
Presentment.
Our partiality refreshment.
Our partiality refreshment.
And complete the opposite.
Order to the Constitution.
Congratulations. Yeah, we're taking pictures. We have a sign.
What's that?
So we all stand like, and we keep, well, and.
Stand in the front. Stand in front. In the middle. In the middle. Me?
Okay. I'll answer it. You're back, so. So we can do that, huh?
One, two, three. Five, six. So I wait to see which one comes up. Everybody's going. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations for our. I'm actually going to call a five-minute recess. I did not hold it.
That's true.
Everyone wants to. A recess for five minutes. Commissioner Brooks, we're wondering if you are back from our five-minute recess.
Yes, I'm still here.
All right. So we're going to resume our meeting. For anyone who joined us a little, took a brief recess to welcome our new town administrator, Clayton Anderson, who will be starting on September 1st. We will now move on to item number C on our agenda, which is property standards. This is a board discussion, and we will take public comment. Our town attorney brought us some, a draft for discussion and gave us an overview of the last meeting. And is wondering if there are comments to make changes, yes?
I don't have, I just wanted to speak first because I don't have any comments. I have not had a chance to thoroughly read the draft. So for me, like unless we have to do something today, I want to read the draft in. But that's just me.
I second that. I've been on travel.
I'm fine if we, this is just a discussion tonight, right? So I'm fine if we leave it for there a little. Comments from the conversation.
Commissioner Brooks, did you have any comments you wanted to share this evening, or do we want to all send written comments to the attorney?
No, I don't have any to share this evening. No, I'm sorry.
Can we, because we want to send written comments to the attorney so that we have another. So we can have a discussion at the September 10th meeting? Can we get? Some would you need them by?
Sure, I can tell you, like, I'll send my comments on Saturday, for sure.
The rest.
I don't want to delay it more.
So should we say, if everyone can provide a written comment, you can send them to me and then I can send them to Attorney Ruff? And if we can do that by September 3rd, since the 2nd is a holiday?
Tuesday.
Does that, does that work for everyone?
Okay.
So I'll send you everyone's comments on September 3rd. So at this time, we will take any public comments on property standards in general. I do want to, before we, like, open the floor, mention that our special assistant has been working on a community engagement portal on our website. And that currently is featuring the charter, which we'll get to next. But we're also going to be adding some property standards pieces to that, and we're going to be doing a variety of other things throughout the year to just create a place for y'all to engage with anything we're working on. So if you are online, do you have at least one hand raised online? We will call on you if you are in the room and you want to comment on property standards, you can come up to the podium to do so. I just state your name and the street, not, you don't have to tell us your address.
Jennifer Wall, Marlboro, Maine. One question, because I'm trying to do it off of memory because I don't have a. But I saw something about the fence height in there. And I know it's conflicted with my HOA requirement for our fence height. So I just want to make sure if there's a conflict between community property standards and HOA requirements.
Mm-hmm. I will answer that. Anyone else in the room want to comment on our property?
Good evening. A little late.
I received.
Your regulations. But my name is Janet Howard. I live in 5300 Wolfen Lane. Most concerned, are we doing, like, HOA regulations now in town of Marlboro?
So I don't want to waste your comments, so I'm going to answer that question. Do you have other questions or comments?
That's my concern for tonight.
Okay.
Is this a copy I can look at?
You can, you can take that. They start on page forty.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. And.
Hear it?
We're going to take the comment from Brian Calacot, and there is another person online.
The Rocker?
Yeah, oh, that's mine. Think you have to unmute for yourself, Brian.
Yep, it was a hidden window. I apologize. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, Brian Calacot, 14518 Church Street. Just a quick note, it would be nice, I think, to see a section on training for consistency and accuracy of the code compliance enforcement by town employees. Perhaps commensurate with the training required at the county level, since mostly it looks like we're trying to do some implementation of county code. That's it.
Thank you. Yes. Joe or Clay?
Joe or Clay, Old Marlboro Pike, as there's still the extra notes about fences. And I know there's been concern about Elm Street and Old Marlboro Pike. I drove that a few times since the last special meeting and realized part of the issue with that is that although the fence does have the proper setback per county rules, there's also a tree then in the corner. And so much more is obstructed than just what the fence obstructs. And so if you have them remove the tree, maybe it's okay, but um, I don't know how you would put that into the ordinance, that it's like the two of them together are the problem. So, okay.
All right, thank you. I think that's all our comments. I want to answer the questions that were raised. So with the HOA, one thing we will have to do is create, if we're receiving permits, we'll have to have HOA approval on any permit from someone in the HOA, because we can't permit something that's not permitted in the HOA, or we wouldn't want to. And we need to write that into.
So hold on. Yeah, please.
Or question.
So there's actually two questions on the floor. So I'm answering the first one first about.
Oh, okay.
Hi. So, am I correct? Do we need to write that into the legislation or is that?
If you just corporations do not generally enforce HOA.
Right.
So if we have town of Marlboro issued a permit for a tenant, and it was not submitted by the HOA, that would be something.
Right, yes. So procedurally, rather than within the law, we would just, as the town, probably require an HOA resident to provide a notice that the HOA has approved it, just so that we don't create problems. That's how we would handle that. The second question is about whether we're adopting HOA standards. We are not adopting HOA standards. We are trying to adopt the county standards. We are having internal conversations regarding enforcement. So I know that that addresses other questions that are raised and, you know, we need to. I think some of the issues are related to vegetation and sight lines around corners. So I think this is, that's more of a sort of internal staff conversation as to how it's enforced. The regulations put forward here pretty much match Prince George's County. And so what we're going to be doing on the, there's a community engagement portal. And that portal will have the latest of the property standards after our town attorney receives the commissioner comments. And it will also provide links to the Prince George's County regulations. All of those spaces will also have a tab where you can click and provide your comments on anything you see in through our virtual comment box, which is online for anything. Like if you have any issue, you can always say, how do I, under how do I? And there's a virtual comment box. You can also always call Town Hall, which is 301-627-6905. And you can send an email. The best way to send your email, if you don't know who it is directed to, is going to be info@uppermarlboromd.gov. And those get routed to the proper person to address concerns, complaints, and staff is dealing with these things as they come in. But we do want to hear what your input is and what you want to see and don't want to see. While also, we have to recognize there's some things that we've wanted to do that are not compliant with Prince George's County code, and as a municipality, we cannot be less restrictive than that. Hope that answers questions. If it doesn't, we will, I'll make myself available afterwards, and you can use any of those methods to talk. Okay, so I have to take us through the procedure of the rest of the meeting, but we will, then we'll go into general public comment where we can discuss. Yes.
Do you have to say something about this?
Yes.
I'm the one that girds the rest of property. It's not that I'm against it, right? I've said this a billion times. But I wish that we were going towards a gradual change versus this quick bang boom, we're doing it now, you're going to get a car down, you might even get some sort of fee or ticket of some sort. And I wish we were coordinating to have downtown be primary focus, you know, and then pay residents. And then, hey, residents, here are the standards we are adopting, which are the county standards. We can't go any less than that. We want this to happen within the next 12 months. And people have time to work and to change, to make changes that they need to versus what is happening now, which I know I'm getting complaints from other residents, from my husband too. And so I just feel like it's such like a quick, and it's, it's not that I'm against the standards in particular, I just feel like I'm being whiplashed by some of this when, quite frankly, I would have never bought a home if I can't have my truck in the front yard. You know, like, things like that, had I known.
But that's Prince George's County standard, that's.
I get it, but the town didn't have that. So if the town didn't have that, I should have the time to coordinate and to get these versus Ux telling me, all right, then I'll see you in court. You know, like that's not only.
So we can't, we, we don't want to talk about individual personnel at all in this discussion, that's a closed session, conversation. But there are, there are questions of enforcement, there are questions of interpretation. And I will say that we are, if you are getting a card and you are feeling like the interpretation should be different, we are taking those and those are, I do think someone reached out to you, hopefully. But if they haven't, let me know, we'll deal with that. We are addressing those questions of interpretation as they come in to try to work out how the ordinance gets enforced. But I think the, the thing is that we got a new code compliance person in February, and they started with the green cards in February. And so it has been several months with the green cards and no citations and no fines and no fees. So people have had time to work on these things. And so now it's the question of enforcement. And I think the other piece that, and, and that's enforcement of our current ordinance, not enforcement of this new ordinance. It's just enforcing the current. The other piece is that there is a focus on downtown, and downtown is receiving green cards and citations. I think actually downtown may have already received citations, but I'm not sure. So it has been gradual, we have been discussing property standards as a board for over a year now.
We have.
So I, I'm just not sure how to make it more gradual, we can't take comments from, I'm sorry, we can't.
I'm sorry, if you're talking about the measures you're listening to.
So.
And you haven't even informed us what you're going to do on this regulation.
So I, right. So I can't allow the public to converse in this meeting, but we can do that, so we can do that at the end. That's just how I have to run the meeting, ladies, I'm sorry, but that's what we have to do.
Let me, let me.
Hold on, I just want to make, maintain order in the meeting. The commissioners may speak, go ahead.
So my point, my point is this, I agree with Commissioner Preve. I've been getting a lot of complaints as well, not just one that I've shared with you recently. I got a couple of them, a couple of months back, about the green cards. And because it wasn't a fine, I didn't think it was a big deal. But I think that if we don't give the information out so people know what the standards are, they can't, even though you say, okay, well, they had time. But if, if they don't have the rules and regulations in their hand where they can read it, I think that that's a disservice to them because they can't prepare themselves. I'm not saying that I'm, I'm against property standards, no, I'm not, because we of course want to maintain the town looking decent and, and we, you know, we, we like the way it looks, that's why we moved here. But at the same token, we have to do things, I think, gradually so that people can catch up.
I think it's, it's two parts in that. I'm not against the property standards, even for my own property. But we don't know, but, I mean, we know, right? The commissioners. We as a public don't know the standards. And yes, you can go look for it, yes, you can go do this and that, but as the town who is just starting to do this, communication should be sent out to the residents, or, hey, new property standards on the sign, or something, there is nothing, you know? And the reality is, is that somebody's coming to people's properties, looking around, peeking around. I don't like that, and it is what it is. But now you're going to tell me I have to fix something without really the notice that this is happening. And yes, it's been six months, that's when we started the conversation, it's six months ago. But like, for everybody else, this, we got a green card, okay? We don't have to address it, we don't have to do anything about it, we have busy lives. And then next thing you know, you're getting more cards, more cards, and you have to call and you have to ask permission, and you have to maybe get a permit, and you have to do this, and you have to do that to avoid fees. And so these are things that I think need a better communication and better buildup for us to be able to reasonably enforce these rules and actually charge people some sort of, you know, fee for like citing them for something. And so I don't feel like we've done that like work of communicating really well to the community, to the residents. Here's the direction we're going, here maybe top 10 resident, you know, typical resident, I don't know, what do you call them, infractions or whatever.
So I want to, so I, I just want to kind of separate two conversations and, and kind of focus and explain what we're doing. So first, this is property standards, these are the standards we're looking at adopting, which is different from the standards we currently have. In February, we hired a new code enforcement officer who's had the experience and knowledge to understand the violations to our property standards and properly address them. Since last August, we've been talking about property standards as a board and letting the public know that that's on the agenda, and that's something we're talking about. That said, so, so it's kind of been out there in the ether. The thing is that, no, you, we're all busy, like, we can communicate till, you know, but until you get that green card, you don't realize that maybe you have something on your property that isn't compliant. The green card is just a courtesy card. It's just saying, hey, your grass is long, or you have a disabled car in.
But is it so, because isn't it more of a record? Like, hey, we gave you a warning, here it is, now you've received the green card, now you get nothing else.
Right, so can I finish explaining the process? So, so there's two pieces to this, and, and I'm going to ask the Director of Public Works to share some experiences around that piece. The first piece is that in order to educate the people who have property violations, we have to let them know they have a property violation. So the green card is meant to say, here's your property standard violation, please fix it. Now, if you don't understand what that is, if you don't know, there is a phone number on that to call. There is a chain of command if you have additional questions or comments. And, and we are working through that chain of command with any additional questions or comments or complaints that are coming in. To some extent, this green card is a documentation, but it's not meant to be a documentation for your resident who says, oh yeah, I was on vacation, I didn't cut my grass, I got it. If you cut your grass, you're not going to hear from or see that green card again. But if you are not a resident, if you're a bank who owns a foreclosed property, we are going to have to abate that property. And that means our Public Works Department is going to have to go in there and mow it. So if we don't start with a green card on a timeline, our Public Works Department will be mowing six foot tall grass, which they do not have the equipment to do, so we will have to pay an outside contractor. And so internally, we had a discussion about the green cards and grass specifically, which is why more people are getting them for grass. Our code officer is new, he hasn't been here enough to know who mows their grass and who doesn't. So he's issuing the green cards for any long grass, for the specific purpose of keeping the cost of it down and our public works crew safe. So people are, I, I think we have to change the perspective on the green card. The green card is education, it's communication. For, we have to follow the same process so that for properties, downtown properties who have violations, foreclosed properties, or properties of absentee owners, we've got to be able to cite those and abate those on a regular, safe basis.
Can I just jump in right there and say, I think that those type of properties should be documented differently than someone who's actually living at their residence.
Yeah, and also I feel like you're.
Sorry, I just want to ask, can we legally?
Abandoned bank to like residents, like that is a commercial building downtown where we are trying to improve economic, just in general, the economy, like we, I can't like take an example of a bank and be like, yeah, that relates to me, because that is a commercial property.
Oh, I mean it.
That is like my focus, you know, that's why I joined this board. But I, I was under no intention, you know, trying to knock on people's door and be like, hey, your grass is tall. And so that's kind of where I'm hesitant, because I really wanted the property standards to be focused on the commercial property first. How can we have kind of not a great downtown area, but then also be like, hey, but you need to cut your grass every week on the nose, or you're going to get a green ticket. And also, like, I can change, I can change my perspective for the green cards, but we can't change 300 other people's perspectives on the green card unless we communicate. And that's what I'm getting at, is like, the communication, I don't think has really been there for all the residents. Only the ones that are kind of getting a slap on the wrist to be like, hey, you're getting this card because you didn't do X, Y, Z, but then what about everyone else? And so that's kind of where I'm like.
Well, in the same way that I talked about, I brought up bringing, educating people about the charter and allowing for comments for the residents. I don't see why we can't, because I haven't really seen anything go out for the charter review. But on top of that, this should also be something that once we put it together and we finalize it, that we make sure we get it out, so the residents, they may not be able to vote on this, but there's certain things, like you said, that are particular infractions that residents typically do, that we can shed more light on and how to avoid getting a notice about, you know, if, we educate people. But we definitely need to put something out where we're communicating and letting everybody know, this is what's coming down the pipe. And I don't know how we, how we start it, downtown is a good idea, but we got to start somewhere. And we just need to put it on a timeline, give people an opportunity.
So I think I want to separate again between the standards and the enforcement. These are the standards. We, we need standards in both places, because, say, we don't adopt property standards, well, what we've decided is that Prince George's County is going to come enforce property standards. And they're not going to give you a green card, and they're not going to give you a courtesy call, and they're not going to give you education. They're going to cite you, they're going to charge you.
Are they allowed to do that?
If we don't have property standards and we don't enforce property standards, yes, they are.
Okay.
So we, the other piece is, when we, our code enforcement officer, if they were part-time, then they would only have to worry about downtown, because they wouldn't have time to do everything. But we have a full-time code enforcement in a very small town. They are addressing, you see the painting happening downtown, the paving happening downtown, the restriping happening downtown. All of that is happening because our code enforcement officer is very active down. I understand that we as a community aren't used to it. And I think the issue here is that we have been communicating since last August, that we are addressing property standards, we want to hear what people have to say about it, we want that input. But like anything with, with the outreach, it's really hard to get people to engage with that outreach until there's that moment when they realize, okay, this applies to me. And that's why we haven't done any citations or infractions yet. That's only the green courtesy cards, because it's an education process. Do understand there are some issues with that, and we are internally dealing with that, and we cannot discuss. But the, the violations themselves have not been put out. I mean, we could put a smiley face on the green card, like, I don't know how to make it more, but in order to have that dialogue and that education, we have to get that person's attention to know that this applies to them.
Right, and can we also provide, when we, when we are putting out those green cards, can we put out some literature with that?
I think key words that you said, Sarah, because I agree with everything that you, but it's like, you said, we, we are a small town. And like, there are a lot of people here because it is a small town, because they, they know where the mayor lives. They want them to have your phone number, unfortunately, but, you know, but it's like, we are a small town. So we should have that mindset of like, well, we need to communicate to our residents, because that's kind of what, you know?
And we do, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out what communication you're looking for that we haven't done.
When you give them the site, when we, they get that card?
I have seen that in a constant contact, to be like, hey, I said property standards.
Not on there.
Uh, flyers, I said a sign in front of the thing, anything to be like, new property standards, you know, look into it, go to this website, or whatever, and people that care will check, people that are getting the green cards will check.
Yeah, they're going to stay.
But the green cards are existing properties. Correct, yes.
Yeah, but they're going to want to look to see, you know, if they want more information.
Oh, yeah, I saw that sign in front of the Town Hall building that says new property standards, maybe I should go look that up. You know, I'm getting a green card, I'm somehow not, you know, doing.
That and the char, charter stuff.
And, and that's where I'm getting at, is I feel like people, people, including Caleb, receive this green card and they get very defensive, because getting on someone's property and you're saying, hey, you're not doing whatever we, the town should be doing, which yes, and that's what I'm getting. I'm okay with the property standard. It's now the aftermath, because nobody knew. No, they're just getting these green cards, and they're like, wait, is this a ticket, is it, is it a citation, am I in trouble? Like, oh, you know, one of the residents was like, I'm going to have to spend a lot of money and this guy keeps coming to my door.
We, and so, again, we got to get back from that, but we are, we are in conversation and working. There are, there are interpretation of ordinance that we are internally. And so I don't want to get too into that, because we're getting into the, so we're getting too into that nitty gritty piece. We can definitely, like, we are going to be talking about this again in September, and hopefully we're going to be adapting it in September. We are working on, you know, the constant contact, we can definitely put out a sign, all of that. And I have encouraged everyone who, and I, I appreciate Ms. Hawley being here, because I've encouraged everyone. Howley, Howley, I'm sorry.
Howard.
Howard, um, being here, because when someone has that issue and that interaction with it, that's when they're noticing, and they can come here and tell us what their thoughts are on it, so we can address that. Unfortunately, like, what's happening is people aren't noticing that we're doing it until it's that green card. So we've got to try to figure that out, right?
Wait, right, they're not noticing until they get their green card, because we as a town have it.
Well, we have, sorry, I should go back.
For them to notice, and, and that's what I'm getting at, is like, I just want them to notice. And I'm not trying to go ag, like, I'm not going against Sarah, I don't want you to feel like.
No, I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to.
A word discussion, right? So we are able to discuss this particular topic. And that's why I want to bring it up, is because I feel like there should be better communication to set expectations, to let people know, and then proceed from there.
So I just want to also clarify that we have had code enforcement, I'm sorry, Chief, how many years have we had code?
Since 2016.
Since 2016. So the, and the green cards have been going out since 2016. Oh, since 20.
No, 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 I think when I was in 2020, in the 2020, in the beginning of 2021, because I created the green card just so that it was a notification, not citation. It was also courtesy to say, hey, here's a notice that there's a violation, could you please fix it? It has a number, so it's been in existence for at least three years, but the policy's been in place since 2000.
And the reason more people are getting them now revolves around that interpretation piece that I keep talking about. So, so when you get a green card, if you disagree with the interpretation, there, we are working through a chain of command to go, to, to look at that. And your response is, and you're, you're talking to us is important, because we don't know unless you communicate with us. So we really appreciate the communication. And, you know, no one, no one has been given a fine yet, except for maybe downtown properties. So that's since February with the new officer and the. So that's since February with the new officer and the, he understands how to enforce things differently, but, uh, again, if there's an interpretation issue, there is a problem. So I'm not saying, you know, we shouldn't do all this, and we, we will and we are. It's just that we don't think people actually notice and, and come to us with it until they're told that there is an actual violation on their property. So...
Okay, so we just gotta work on communication, right?
Right. Any comments? Sorry, we've been talking in. Commissioner Brooks, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I'm good on that.
Okay. Um, so for our comments to the attorney, we're gonna focus on the actual standards and the ordinance. If we have to have an enfor- as we have enforcement and interpretation discussions, those are generally happening internally, as we are made aware of. Um, we are gonna move on to the charter review. We will have another pu- public comment period, so if you want to make another comment on property standards, you'll have an opportunity. And at the end of the meeting, we will be around to, to have more of a dialogue on individual issues. So, charter review, we are working on revising our charter. Now that we have, um, our new town administrator, that will start to get more focus again. Uh, we do have a community engagement portal. It has broken down the charter into individual pieces. Each piece has a link to that virtual comment box. You can go over there and make a comment. Um, the charter addresses things like, um, how our finances are done, how elections are run, um, what powers the board has, what powers the president has, what, what, um, certain staff members have, like, the chief of police, the town administrator, the town clerk are in there. Um, Carrie Ross, anything else? Big, how many sheep you can have on the green?
Your charters are by, you know, your organizational constructs. So it's, it's just, that's for how your government operates. That's all aspects of that, powers, duties of...
That, it, it does kind of impact you, and we've tried to break it up to make it easy, because it's a big document and a lot, um...
It did on the very important residents, uh...
We are working on a ver- a V I R, um, to go out this week.
Okay, okay.
So...
And I want everybody to look at it, because we want your comments.
Well, so, and yes, and so if you're not on V I R, that's another issue. If you're not getting a V I R, it's like a little re- black, red and, black and red thing at the top of your email from us. It says, "V I R," that is beginning directly to our residents. You aren't on that list.
Please call the town.
Yes. Um, you can call, you can email, and we can get you on the list.
Please look at the charter.
So, public comment now, uh, if anyone is here and would like to make a comment on the charter for us to include in this interview, uh, please come forward or raise your hand.
If you can come in here on the charter list.
On the V I R list?
On the V I R.
If you hang out, we'll sign you up at the end of the, I thought I'd signed you up already, but, um, so, yes, you can comment again.
A poor example, V I R. I have been a resident in this community for six, I don't think I've ever received. So if I've been here six years, and we have new people moving into the community, how are they aware that this stuff is online for us to, um, follow your codes if they have not been informed? Now, when I first moved here, we used to put things in the mailbox, you know, put a little notice from the community board, what's going on, and keep us aware, and, you know, as residents. But just moving forward and not being informed, I really do feel it's lack of communication, because if you're changing up on an old system, we should know about it. That's my major concern. If you're moving forward, we should be informed as to what changes are being made in the community. We should not have to sit back and watch and see and notice the changes. We should know what's going on. So my suggestion is, maybe have a forum and inform your neighbors and the people that, that elected you and supported, what's taking place. I don't really think it's fair of us not to be left out. And suppose I wasn't computer savvy, because I am elderly, then what other form of communication do you have? And there's a lot of other neighbors here, they're elderly, not keeping up with the computer. So I, I suggest, my suggestion is, put something in my mind. This is just a note on our mailbox, which is stick things up on our walls and properties. Not next at all, or small neighborhood, that night, very cold, home to this neighborhood, or age away. Can you keep my property up to date? And I'm going to age away, wouldn't move into it.
Okay. So we're gonna, we need to talk afterwards on a few things. So are there comments on the charter, though, that anyone has on, are there anyone online with hands raised on the charter? All right. So, no comments on charter, so I want to move to administrative updates. I'm gonna ask the department heads if they have any administrative updates.
Oh, God, is that a cop.
Uh, administrative update. Um, I will just, because I want to reiterate this a couple of times, September 10th meeting is a special meeting. It is always a special, it's every other year it's a special meeting, uh, we have to nominate and approve the board of supervisors of elections. So during that special meeting, we will also be voting, it's by our charter, do it. Um, so we'll also vote on the police base lease at that time.
Sarah, are, for that special meeting, we already have, if the people that are gonna be nomin- nominated or...
Right. So we have, um, if you are a resident in the community and you want to be on the board of supervisors of elections, you can email clerk@uppermarlboroMC.gov, or you can always email info, or go to that virtual comment box, it's online. You can always do those things. Um, and request to be on it. We do have a board of supervisors of elections currently, and I've reached out to them to see if they're interested in serving another two years. Um, and so our board can have three to five people on it. Right now it has three. Um, and so if there's more interest than the three, then we will be able to do that.
So the special meeting is September 10th?
It's our reg- it's our regular work special time. It has to be a special meeting, because we have to do that at that time. Anything else? All right. Did you have anything?
No.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to general public comment. Then we'll look at the next meeting's agenda, then we'll adjourn, and we can have a discussion, um, we can have more of a discussion forum. This is more of a watching the board vote forum, but we will move into a discussion forum. Okay, go ahead with our online comment.
Just wanted to remind people that we're still doing the board games every other Wednesday. Um, it's not tomorrow, it's the week after, so, um...
No, we can't hear you.
Play a lot of party games and cooperative games and stuff like that, so, um, come on down if you wanna meet your neighbors.
Board games on every other Wednesday here at the town hall?
Yep, uh, every other Wednesday at the town hall. It's not tomorrow, it's next week. So next Wednesday will be the next one. Hopefully some of that went through.
What time is that?
Uh, six o'clock to nine. And we play a lot of party games, so just drop by when you can.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Uh, that looks like all the public comment we have on general items. Do we have general items?
Lieutenant George, we're going to drive. Uh, I want to know what's going on with committees, Sarah. Uh, I've had several people come up to me and say, "I put my name in for a committee. I'm here enough. Do I volunteer? Think more like getting back to them?" It doesn't work that way. You have to stop doing that. So, uh, website, few sites that I have been on here lately, I keep getting referred to a blank page. Uh, same thing with the phones. I've called three times, phone number, I've never gotten a person. And that's, you know, sporadically, I just don't get anybody. Uh, we have the V I R, and those jumble, the V I R. They put twenty seven things on the V I R, nobody's gonna read it. Those property standards to be looked at, everybody, just put that on the V I R, they'll read it. If you put seven things in, they're gonna scroll and they're not gonna come back. So think about that when you put your V I R, especially on things like the property standards and the, and the curse. You want people to see that. You don't want them to see all the other stuff that you want to see. If that's your focus, put that up. I know sometimes I, I did it in this life, "Wee, spin the wheel of fortune." And, and it's not stuff that people want to see. You want them to see what's important and what you're working on now. They're not seeing it now. They're seeing a lot of looks. And they don't, they got tired of look. They keep moving right on along. But...
Okay. Any other general public comments?
My question is, affirmative about violations that come out, and I guess this is the document you all refer to. Um, this is the first time seeing a document such as this. The violation was placed in my house. I have nothing to do with writing, specify any court, litigation for it. And then when I was, the piece of writing, I was taking it in the postbox, we didn't reflect, looking at the toilet. The person basically made up their own violation and gave me something to put on the signboard. I was not known to my house. They removed my veil, they knocked on the door. And it made me very bruised, my mom, when she approached them. And this is 2019, go have a homeowner's association, go pay your fees, know that we have this. What I would like to see is, we share notices, even if you're not, you are visible, they're placed on the mailbox, a little plastic bag. Then I know something's coming up. Somebody in the meeting, or I know about the meeting, how do you know about the document that's being treated? The vacuum is of a forum. I hope it's about the formula that's also around for the town of Long Grove, but the more people live in the community, the more people are here. So it must be representative of who's in the community. Those people can be, that people have, that's not making sense.
Okay. Any other handles online? So I want to address a couple of things. Um, we are working on the website, we'll have, oh, you have a public comment? Yes, come on up, sorry.
Yes. Hi, I'm Al Marlboro Lane. I would like to see Marlboro Rose moves from the holding out on day list to the working on list, and, um, I know I normally say, "I want an ice cream shop in town," and you said, "I'm gonna stay," um, but today I just want to say it's probably, uh, additional for that, more to you, because I think you're part of the...
You can't talk directly to Commissioner, sorry.
Well, okay, yeah, but I'm...
Sorry.
You're part of the committee, or head of the committee or whatever, but just look at why we don't have an ice cream shop in town. I look into it to see what mechanisms and reasons why we don't have an ice cream shop in town. And I have a feeling that it would be systematic of a larger problem now, now that needs, because that'll be Commissioner's part one, solutions for.
Um, so, sorry, I, let, let me just, okay, yes, you can come up again. I have to maintain order, because it's a court meeting. So, yes, go ahead, you can.
I would like to ask, that, except tell us, is a special election coming up? Is that for officers or for election or what? What is that about?
Okay, so I'm gonna, so I can answer all the questions kind of at the end. So do you have any other questions or comments?
Comments. I did have another comment. So I did mention that we'd like to have a forum, you know, as a suggestion for the residents to come out, because, uh, the last time I came, this place, we talked about improving downtown and, um, we have the structures and stuff like that, and we first had an office. Happy tonight. So what, we're, we are our neighbors, you know, so, um, I would like to see more of the community come out to help with these, helping to address the burn, since we live here without people just comes with. I would keep the neighborhood a little bit more friendly and not so rigid. Uh, when you had your thing last summer, this night, people did come out, you know, so, um, to notice what's been going on since you were elected, and it's where, back and jumping, Alex came a little cold. Also, before I finish speaking, I'm sorry that I'm just rattling one right now, because, um, very, kind of surprised, where things are tonight, you know, with us not communicating with one another. That was one thing I liked about neighborhoods, moving in. We used to talk to each other, and I don't see that. Uh, can we make some improvements and get everybody back out, get to know what's going on, and how they...
Did we get anyone online? Oh, okay. Okay, so I'm gonna address a couple things quick. I'm gonna do answer, Q and A first. Um, Marlboro Rose, well, actually, you know what, let me say, let me start with this. Um, last year at this time, our town administrator, who had been with us for eight years, resigned. Since that time, I have been functioning as both the mayor and the town administrator. It has been exhausting, um, and it has taken a lot from what I used to do as mayor, to just make sure our grants are in order, our bond bills are in order, our payments are in order. Um, we just were in our new town administrator today. He has twenty-eight years of experience in municipal government. He has already been working with the town as a circuit rider, and he is going to be able to take all of that, which is going to help for getting back out in the community. So I do kind of want to address this issue of communication and where is everybody and all of that, because I do need all, your help with this. The forums that we had when we developed our, were well-attended. They were well-attended, because I picked up my phone and I spent an hour and a half texting every resident who I know in town, who I have their information for. I don't have everyone's information, but when I sit down and I spend a few hours texting everyone, people show up. We have these meetings every second and fourth Tuesday at seven o'clock, always. If it's canceled, there will be a notice on the door, there will be a V I R, and there will be a notice out in next door. and there will be a notice out in next door. So, always, these meetings happen. But these meetings aren't conversations, they're a board meeting. They're a place for the residents to come and watch the board work. They are also where we can get your input on what we're doing. And then, at the end of the meeting, we can also have more of a discussion. So it's not that we don't want to have discussions, it's that this isn't our forum for discussions. I was also doing something called Community Conversations, and I was going out every second Saturday to a different community, and standing around for an hour or two. And I was standing around alone for an hour or two. I was doing that on Saturdays. So what I need from the community is to find out what we do, so that we have those conversations, so that there's a place for a conversation, right? And then there's a place for the comment. So what, these are the things I've done, but what would work better for everyone? What's a better way for us to create discussions around? We do have to work, we do have to legislate, we have to do all this, and we do that in the public forum every second and fourth Tuesday at 7:00 PM. And we need you in this room, because we've been talking about property standards for a year, and we haven't heard anything. The property standards that are being enforced are the existing property standards, they're not new property standards. So, we have to have that discussion as we move forward. We need participation. And the question is, what is the barrier right now to that participation? We're trying to figure out the answer to that question, but it would be helpful if you all can help us by telling us what that barrier is. When is a convenient time for us to create these events? What's the best way for us to communicate that? And what is the best place to do them? I will also say that a lot of the mail communications were cut out through budget, budget decisions, because they are expensive. So we can look at our budget and try to find additional money to move around into a budget adjustment to increase the mailing budget. The board has to agree to that, because the board did decide as a whole board to cut that budget. So I just want to kind of explain why things feel like they're a little... We are not having a special election. I want to answer that and clarify that. It's simply that we appoint the board that runs our elections. We appoint them in the year we do not have an election. That gives them time, if they're new folks, to learn everything they need to know. That gives them time to prepare for the election. So in 2025, we will have an election. So in 2024, we appoint the board. If it's a new board, they can take training, and then they start to gear up for the election around June or July, up next year, so. So, sorry. So the Board of Supervisors of Elections, our residents of the town of Upper Marlboro, right now, that board consists of Jay Summerlot, Danielle Durham, and Evelyn Stevens. Any resident of the town of Upper Marlboro can ask to be on that board. And that is communicated by emailing clerk@uppermarlboroMD.gov. And that's how we get that information. So responsibilities for that are the running of our elections, the coordinating of our elections, the counting of ballots sitting during the election. There's a lot of different things they do, and do you know more stuff? Voter list? Voter registration list. There's a lot of stuff they do, and I, as an elected official, do not know all of the things they do, because I cannot, none of us elected officials are involved in their work, because they have to be impartial. Right, if you want to be appointed, email us ahead of September 10th, and we'll all vote on the name.
I'm just trying to stay with that basis.
So, so yes, but I have to, I have to try to maintain order, because it's a board meeting. So we can talk more.
If you're not clear, I'm going to ask questions.
So that's fine, but I need to, so I need to answer the questions, close the meeting, and then we can have more conversations. So, um, so if you're interested in being on that board, you email us at clerk, then you will be communicated with if we are going to appoint you. If I get 10 people who want to be on the board, I'm going to have to pick only five. If I only have the three people who are already on, who want to be on it, that's who will be on it. So, but you have to email, and then I will have a list to nominate. The board will vote on that list of nominations. So the, we'll talk more about that, and we'll send out, we've been sending out communications on that, but we'll send more. So Marlboro Town Roads is going to be on the new town administrator's list to assist with. Committees, committees, I have been communicating with people as well, to let them know that we are going to be restarting our committees this fall, and everyone will be communicated with this fall. There is some confusion between VIR and Constant Contact. I want to make sure people know the difference. If you're a resident of the town, you should be getting an email if you register, and it has a thing at the top, it's a very important resident. You get one every week, two, that anyone can sign up for. But you have to be a resident to be getting this one. It looks like a, it's Broadway, it's a show, it's a very important resident. If you're not getting it, please let me know, and we will deal with that. Okay, so, and I just want to reiterate, if you're having issues with property standards implementation, if you've got a green card and you have a question, or there's an interpretation, please communicate with Town Hall at info@uppermarlboroMD.gov, or by calling 301-627-6905, and we will consider the interpretation. Did I miss anything? Sorry. Info@uppermarlboroMD.gov, or call Town Hall at 301-627-6905. Staff is trained to help everyone and send things through the proper process and procedure. Did I miss anything? All right. When you call Town Hall, if no one picks up, please leave a message. You know, if multiple calls come in.
The message part, just got around and round and round.
You, we have a new message, message response, you have to follow the prompt on it to get to the message. So, listen to the prompts. There is a new message with new prompts, and this is because we get so many calls for Prince George's County that your staff that you pay for to help you all is spending hour, was spending hours of their time talking to residents outside the town about issues that we could not help them with. The new phone answering system has cut down on this substantially, and staff is spending maybe an hour a week talking to people that are outside of the town about issues not related to the town. That is a savings and efficiency for you all, and it means they can focus on serving you. I know it's a little harder for us, but it is worth it for us to be making sure the focus is on us. Okay? All right. I would like to look at the preliminary, approval of the next meeting agenda, and then close this meeting so we can actually have some conversation with getting, okay. So, next meeting, the special meeting would be the appointments for the Board of Supervisors of Elections. And I'll send those to you guys ahead of time, so you know who's going to be appointed. Police base contract should be ready, which means we can vote on it, correct? And then, after that special meeting, we're going to move into a work session, because we have to really just have a conversation and hash some of this stuff out. If we don't have any comments on charter review, we may not have anything to discuss. Does anyone have anything they would like to add to that?
No.
All right. So, we want to have a conversation with the residents here, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Go move second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, meeting is adjourned, so we can talk, we can talk now.